Blasting in the morning is a really great way to keep your teeth healthy and start the day, but when you're through, here's what you do: throw it in the trash, don't flush it. There's a problem lots of people don't know called sanitary sewer overflow, a condition buried deep in the ground. Inside a hydro bed clouds are found. It's a problem we can all help solve, so throw it in the trash, don't flush it. Baby wipe fender just caught impact, paper towels, dental floss clog up bad, medicines, kitty litter, cotton swabs, hair, throw them in the trash, don't flush it. It just takes a second to do the right thing, so toss it and let's keep our pipes clean. Throw it in the trash, don't flush it. If it's not toilet paper, don't flush it, even if it says you can, don't flush it. If you're having any doubts, don't flush it. One more time, don't flush it.
When you put recyclables in a plastic bag, it gets tangled in the sorting machine and
When you put recyclables in a plastic bag, it gets tangled in the sorting machine and ruins recycling.
ruins recycling.
Let's all properly recycle.
Let's all properly recycle.
So properly recycle, leave out the plastic bags.
What?
In my 25 years of plumbing, this is the worst stench I have ever smelled.
How did this happen?
You fed the monster these so-called flushable wipes.
Monster?
They call it the Clog. With two G's because it's extra gross. You see, packaging will have you believe they are safe for plumbing and flushable, but in fact, they are not. They combine with other sewage in the pipes and become the Clog. This is the monster you created.
I didn't know.
Next time, save yourself the headache and the repair bill and throw those flushable wipes into trash.
What?
Welcome to a meeting of your planning commission, the official local planning agency for the cities of Tampa, Temple Terrace, Plan City, and unincorporated Hillsborough County. The Planning Commission provides innovative leadership and long-range vision that contributes to the creation of a thriving prosperous community that offers opportunity, fairness, and choice in how we live, move, learn, work, and play. For more information about the Planning Commission, please call 813-272-5940. Follow us on social media or visit our website at planhillsborough.org.
Good afternoon. Welcome to the March 9th, 2020 regular meeting of the Hillsborough County City County Planning Commission. We thank you for attending this meeting. Your comments and participation are encouraged. Please sign the register at the rear of the room and turn off any devices that may be a distraction. If you wish to address the commission on any agenda items, we ask that you please complete the public comment signing sheet at the back of the room. When addressing the commission, please state your name and speak directly into the microphone. The public will be given an opportunity to address the planning commission on planning issues not on the agenda and on agenda items that are not up for action. For action items, the meeting will be conducted as follows. The agenda item will be introduced. Staff will give their presentation with a 15-minute time limit. The applicant will be given the opportunity to make a presentation with a 15-minute time limit. Following presentations, members of public may address the planning commission when recognized by the chair. Public comment will be heard for three minutes per person. The applicant will be afforded a three-minute period for rebuttal or response. Planning commissioners will ask questions. Public comment will be closed, then upon a motion, second, and discussion, a vote will be taken. With that introduction, I'll ask Commissioner Moreno to lead us in the prayer and pledge of allegiance. All rise, please.
Heavenly Father, we come before you today with praise for your mighty power and guidance. We thank you for this day and thank you too for the many blessings in our lives, for our great country, and for the opportunity to live in freedom. We ask your blessings on our leaders, and we ask that you give each one of us here today the wisdom to make the right choices so that our decisions will be in the best interest of the people of Hillsborough County. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, sovereign, indivisible, infinite, and just for all.
Thank you, Commissioner Moreno. A roll call, please.
Good afternoon, Commissioner Bernstein.
Here.
Cardenas. Dickerson.
Here.
Dix.
Here.
Doughty.
Here.
Green.
Present.
Joseph.
Here.
Cress.
Here.
Moreno.
Here.
Powell.
Here.
Rodriguez.
Here.
Thrower.
Here.
You have a quorum.
Okay, thank you. Next up is the approval of the minutes for the public hearing on city of Tampa plan amendments from February 9th, 2020. Any comments concerning those minutes? Do we have a motion for approval? Motion of approval? We got a motion of approval by Commissioner Powell, second by Commissioner Doughty. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Anyone opposed? Minutes are approved unanimously as written. Thank you. We are going to move on to public input, public comment. If there's anyone who wishes to provide comments on items that are not on the agenda or agenda items that are not up for action, please approach the podium one at a time and state your name and address. You will have three minutes. Okay, no public comment. We'll move on to the evaluation of our executive director, Tracy. Oh, he's making copies. Yeah, we'll go on to, we'll go to item number four, presentation 2020 regional competitiveness report.
Good afternoon. My name is Yasurt Gonzalez with the Planning Commission. We're going to hear from Dave Sobush. He's a consumer economic development professional, that worked on both sides of the Bay since 2005, graduate of USF and UF, and again, he's gonna go over this, I would say, monumental work of digesting this data and presenting to you guys the conclusions.
Thank you, Yasurt, and thank you to the planning commission for inviting me to be here today. And regarding the change in agenda, Executive Director Zornita, if it reflects positively on your review, you know where to reach me. I am Dave Sobush, Director of Policy and Research from the Tampa Bay Partnership. The work we are doing to benchmark our region along with our partners from United Way Suncoast, Community Foundation of Tampa Bay, and the USF Muma College of Business is a critical step in both understanding and addressing the major challenges we face in Tampa Bay. On Thursday, January 9th, we released the findings from our research to an audience of more than 500 business, government, and philanthropic leaders from throughout Tampa Bay at the State of the Region Community Luncheon. I'd like to share with you a brief video that summarizes the 2020 highlights and then dig deeper into a few of the indicators that drive our economy. When we speak of Tampa Bay, we're referring to an eight-county, four-MSA region, 4.8 million population, 16,020 markets we benchmark against, with a gross regional product or GRP of close to $200 billion, ninth among the 20 markets. As we watch this video related to the indicators for Tampa Bay, I ask you to consider one important question: are we creating an economy that works for everyone? The data you're about to see hits a lot of high notes regarding our economic growth and the attractiveness of our community to both residents and businesses. With all of the exciting momentum we see across the region right now, and particularly in Hillsborough County and the city of Tampa, it would be very easy to pat ourselves on the back and say, "Mission accomplished." But a closer look shows that we've still got a lot of work to do if we want to create a community where everyone prospers and no one is left behind.
What gets measured is what gets done. That's why it's so important to look at the state of our region using reliable, accessible, and comparable data. More than 100 business, government, and nonprofit leaders in Tampa Bay have joined forces. We've identified over 60 indicators that drive our economy that, if moved in the right direction, can create prosperity for all. We've identified 19 communities across the United States that we see as our peers. Each year, we track how we're doing against these communities and the country as a whole. We dig deep into this data and look honestly at our strengths and our weaknesses to find out what we're doing well, where we can improve, and how we stack up against the competition. But we're not just looking backward. Using innovative real-time data, we can identify where to invest our time and our resources to move the needle on our greatest challenges as we move forward. In just three years, we've changed the way we view our region and redefined the role that each of us has in its future. We're excited to share the new data with you, so let's unveil the results. In 2020, Tampa Bay ranks in the top 10 and 14 different indicators, and we gained ground on our competitors in half of those areas. We topped the list of net migration for the second year in a row after being at the bottom of the pack just a decade ago. More new businesses are starting in Tampa Bay, and we're one of only two communities starting more businesses now than we did before the recession. The value of our homes continues to grow, and we saw positive export growth for the first time in four years. The data shows us that people want to be here, and they believe in our economy. But there's another story to tell. In more than three-quarters of the indicators, we're in the bottom half. In many, we're standing still or losing ground. Our GRP per capita takes the value of all the goods and services produced in Tampa Bay and divides that by our population. It's an important way to compare the wealth and health of our economy to our competition. Tampa Bay sits in last place and has consistently been at the bottom for more than 10 years. Many signs now point to a widening economic gap in our region. Our household income once again ranks last. Our average wage trails all but one community, and income inequality is at an all-time high. For many of our residents, it's becoming increasingly difficult to afford basic necessities such as housing and transportation. For those who can't afford a car of their own, our lack of public transit options limits their access to medical care, childcare, and jobs, which leads to more people sitting out of the economy and falling deeper into poverty. But that's not where our story ends. The data shows us that there's a clear path forward to a competitive, prosperous community where no one is left behind. We've still got some work to do, but when we know our challenges, we can solve our challenges, and with strategic investment in transit, education, and other important drivers, we can begin to create a new tomorrow today.
So as we dig into these key indicators, we'll see how certain demographic factors might impact our residents' levels of opportunity and personal prosperity. In terms of what we earn, there's a major gap between Tampa Bay and our competitors. With an average private sector wage of $48,304, Tampa Bay ranks 19th out of the 20 markets we examine, trailing only Orlando. I'll note that Hillsborough County wages, while the highest in the Tampa Bay region at $54,000, still trail the national average. If you are a woman in Tampa Bay, the prospects are somewhat glum. Male workers over the age of 25 in Tampa Bay earn a median wage of $41,000 per year, while female workers are earning less than $32,000 per year. We see that this wage gap persists at every level of education, and when you see the red in here, those are the relevant Hillsborough County figures for the indicators listed. All this said, education may still be the best indicator for professional and financial success in Tampa Bay regardless of gender. At a median wage of $36,529, that is where we see the typical 25-year-old and older worker. And with a graduated professional degree, it rises to almost $62,000 per year. And at the opposite end of the spectrum, if you have less than a high school diploma, the median wage is around $22,000 per year. And we'll note that at the low end, the Hillsborough County figures are not that dissimilar from the regional figures, but the gap widens as the level of educational attainment moves up. The type of industry in which you're employed can also play a big role in what you earn. Nearly one-third of the workers in Tampa Bay, 604,000 residents, are employed in generally lower-wage occupations where they're earning a median wage of less than $29,000. These low wages are translating directly into another major weakness in our region: our median household income, where at $55,000, we rank last among our competitors. And again, you see the relevant Hillsborough County statistic there, slightly higher than the regional figure, but still generally below the comparison markets at the top. We can also see a racial divide. African-American households in Tampa Bay are earning less than $42,000, 72% of the median income for white, non-Hispanic households. In Hillsborough County, that 72% difference is even wider. It's a 57% African-American households earning 57% of the median income of white, non-Hispanic households. Our Hispanic and Latino neighbors are faring slightly better at $48,000 regionally, but that is only 82% of the median income for white households, relevant Hillsborough County statistic, 65%. Collectively, all of these earnings gaps, whether by race, sex, educational attainment, or industry, are contributing to a high level of poverty in Tampa Bay. We rank 16th in the youth poverty indicator, joining South Florida and Orlando in the group of communities with higher rates of youth poverty than the nation as a whole. In Tampa Bay, those living in poverty are more likely to be young, undereducated, and of color, all of which tells us that we need to do better when it comes to closing the gaps and ensuring equal access to education and opportunity. We often tout the low cost of living in Tampa Bay, but the average household in our region is spending more than 50% of its monthly income on housing and transportation alone. Because of budget constraints, many of these households can only access jobs by walking or cycling, transit, or some combination of these modes. And relative to the region as a whole, Hillsborough County residents spend slightly less of their money on transportation, but more of their money on housing, making Hillsborough County less affordable compared to the other communities in the region. This puts them in a real disadvantage considering Tampa Bay's last-place ranking in terms of transit supply. We're significantly under-resourced compared to other metro areas, and some of our most vulnerable residents are the ones paying the price. So what we have here, these next couple slides, show some policy initiatives. These data were modeled by PhDs at the University of South Florida, and what this shows is Tampa Bay's relative position on a line ranking. At the bottom left, that is 20th place, and at the upper right, that is first place. And we see what happens to things like poverty rate, income inequality, and economic mobility, which is the chance that a child growing up is going to be able to move from a bottom-income strata into a higher-income strata. We took a look at all of the data, all of the indicators, and what the professors at USF found was that the availability of transit in a community measured by vehicle revenue miles per hour, the number of lines on a map, and how frequently a vehicle or transit option travels on those lines has the most significant impact on these personal prosperity metrics. And so what we'll see here is Tampa Bay starting slightly in the middle of poverty rates. So this is poverty rate, and we're gonna inject 20 revenue miles per capita, roughly tripling the amount of transit in a community. And we can see that Tampa Bay moves very quickly from sort of the middle into the upper third of the comparison regions. In terms of inequality on income, we are measuring this through something called the Gini index, and that is a number between 0 and 1. 0 represents that all the money is divided equally among all the people. 1 means that all the money is held by one person, preferably me, in the economy. Thank you. It works every single time. And so, and there's no real magic number, and I don't mean to confuse magic and genie, but what you do is, you don't want the number to get bigger. You don't want incomes generally to be moving more unequal. And what happens to Tampa Bay's ranking in income inequality as we offer transit into the economy is, again, a little more subdued, but still significantly present where the rate of income inequality change decreases. And in terms of economic mobility, again, this is that American dream, the chance that a child growing up in a lower-income household can move by the time they are a wage earner into an upper-income household. Right now, Tampa Bay ranks 13th out of the 20 communities in terms of the chances our children have of moving from a low-income strata into a higher-income strata. And as you offer access to healthcare, education, and employment, it's astonishing to see what happens to economic mobility within the region, moving from 13th to third among the comparison markets. That's the long and short of the data. I do appreciate the time. If time permits, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Okay, any questions from commissioners? Commissioner Powell?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. For the purposes of the data, I heard you refer a few times to like the Tampa Bay area, but then like Hillsborough County.
Right.
So some of the things that, when you were saying like Tampa Bay region, is that just city of Tampa, or are we including the suburbs, Brandon, you know, Valrico, Riverview?
So if I may, I'm gonna go back to the slide with the map. So in, when I refer to Tampa Bay, I'm referring to an eight-county, 4.8 million population. This is roughly the same as the media market. The media market also includes Hardy County. So these are four MSAs. The ones that are the same color, so the four counties, Hernando, Pasco, Hillsborough, and Pinellas, are one metropolitan statistical area. They demonstrate a large amount of economic connectivity. If you don't believe me, go stand on the Howard Franklin Bridge almost any time of the day, and you can see the relationship that Sarasota-Manity also have. What I do when I make these presentations to bodies that control or offer guidance and jurisdiction over one particular community, I offer a little bit of local color so that you can understand how your community fits into the region as a whole. Okay. Thank you. Commissioner Green?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you for the presentation, David. A lot of information I'm still trying to process personally myself, but a quick question. How often is this done?
We release the data once a year, and it's because the, most of our sources are the federal statistical agencies that themselves have annual updates. So the big tranche of the 60 indicators in our report comes from the American Community Survey. Okay. And that comes out in September, October. Last year it was November. Okay, and they're always consistent? It's the same methodology. Same methodology. Correct. And furthermore, Mr. Green, I would suggest that because we are benchmarking, you know, Tampa Bay against these other markets, sort of the year-to-year changes in the methodology are, I would suggest, somewhat less important than the, you know, each year the methodology is the same. So we're looking at the data for those communities, same methodology every year. It's less of a trend analysis and really more of a snapshot.
Okay, Commissioner Bernstein?
Mr. Sobush, thanks for the presentation. That data is enlightening, and I applaud the partnership for not sugarcoating some of it, which probably could be tempting from time to time. My question, I guess, goes to this: if I were to watch this and digest the data, the themes that I take away from it are that, you know, it's on the negative side a story of gaps, particularly economic and maybe socioeconomic gaps within the region, but also relative to the other benchmarked regions we're competing with. And it sounds like what you're suggesting is that the best way to close the gaps is through increased access to healthcare and transit options. I mean, that's a simplification, but that's what I take from this. And I guess all that is to ask you, from the partnership's perspective, as you look forward, what are some of the concrete solutions that the video alluded to, but which are within reach? I mean, we took a shot at the referendum last year. Beyond that, what are you all looking at?
Well, primarily, we at the partnership are supportive of the Surtax in Hillsborough County. We were contributors to the referendum effort. My boss, President and CEO of the partnership, Rick Holmans, was in the second row at the Supreme Court hearings. We're confident that there will be a funding source in Hillsborough County going forward. And how that manifests itself, and I think a lot of attention in what we've learned in studying transit in other communities, is a lot of attention goes to the show horse, the premium project lines, but the real value of transit is sort of irrespective of mode, and it's just the frequency and the coverage, which translates into that vehicle revenue miles. And we see what happens to things like poverty rate, income inequality, and economic mobility, which is the chance that a child, growing up, is going to be able to move from a bottom-income strata into a higher-income strata. We took a look at all of the data, all of the indicators, and what the professors at USF found was that the availability of transit in a community, measured by vehicle revenue miles per hour, the number of lines on a map, and how frequently a vehicle or transit option travels on those lines, has the most significant impact on these personal prosperity metrics. And so what we'll see here is Tampa Bay is starting slightly in the middle of poverty rates. So this is poverty rate, and we're going to inject 20 revenue miles per capita, roughly tripling the amount of transit in a community. And we can see that Tampa Bay moves very quickly from sort of the middle into the upper-third of the comparison regions. In terms of inequality on income, we are measuring this through something called the Gini index. And that is a number between 0 and 1. 0 represents that all the money is divided equally among all the people. 1 means that all the money is held by one person, preferably me, in the economy. Thank you. It works every single time. So, and there's no real magic number, and I don't mean to confuse magic and genie. But what you do is, you don't want the number to get bigger. You don't want incomes generally to be moving more unequal. And what happens to Tampa Bay's ranking in economic, in income inequality as we offer transit into the economy is, again, a little more subdued, but still significantly present where the rate of income inequality change decreases. And in terms of economic mobility, again, this is that American dream, the chance that a child, growing up in a lower-income household, can move by the time they are a wage earner into an upper-income household. Right now, Tampa Bay ranks 13th out of the 20 communities in terms of the chances our children have of moving from a low-income strata into a higher-income strata. And as you offer access to health care, education, and employment, it's astonishing to see what happens to economic mobility within the region, moving from 13th to third among the comparison markets. That's the long and short of the data. I do appreciate the time. If time permits, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Okay. Any questions from commissioners? Commissioner Powell?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. For the purposes of the data, I heard you refer a few times to like the Tampa Bay area, but then like Hillsborough County.
Right.
So some of the things that, when you were saying like Tampa Bay region, is that just city of Tampa, or are we including the suburbs, Brandon, you know, Valrico, Riverview?
So, if I may, I'm going to go back to the slide with the map. So, in, when I refer to Tampa Bay, I'm referring to an eight-county, 4.8 million population. This is roughly the same as the media market. The media market also includes Hardy County. So these are four MSAs. The ones that are the same color, so the four counties, Hernando, Pasco, Hillsborough, and Pinellas, are one metropolitan statistical area. They demonstrate a large amount of economic connectivity. If you don't believe me, go stand on the Howard Franklin Bridge almost any time of the day, and you can see the relationship that Sarasota-Manity also have. What I do when I make these presentations to bodies that control or offer guidance and jurisdiction over one particular community, I offer a little bit of local color so that you can understand how your community fits into the region as a whole.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Commissioner Green?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you for the presentation, David. A lot of information I'm still trying to process personally myself, but a quick question. How often is this done?
We release the data once a year, and it's because the, most of our sources are the federal statistical agencies that themselves have annual updates. So the big tranche of the 60 indicators in our report comes from the American Community Survey.
Okay.
And that comes out in September, October. Last year it was November.
Okay. And they're always consistent?
It's the same methodology.
Same methodology.
Correct.
Okay.
And furthermore, Mr. Green, I would suggest that because we are benchmarking, you know, Tampa Bay against these other markets, sort of the year-to-year changes in the methodology are, I would suggest somewhat less important than the, you know, each year, the methodology is the same. So we're looking at the data for those communities, same methodology every year. It's less of a trend analysis and really more of a snapshot.
Okay. Commissioner Bernstein?
Mr. Sobish, thanks for the presentation. That data is enlightening, and I applaud the Partnership for Not Sugar Coating some of it, which probably could be tempting from time to time. My question, I guess, goes to this. If I were to watch this and digest the data, the themes that I take away from it are that, you know, it's on the negative side a story of gaps, particularly economic and maybe socioeconomic gaps, within the region, but also relative to the other benchmarked regions we're competing with. And it sounds like what you're suggesting is that the best way to close the gaps is through increased access to health care and transit options. I mean, that's a simplification, but that's what I take from this. And I guess all that is to ask you, from the partnership's perspective, as you look forward, what are some of the concrete solutions that the video alluded to, but which are within reach? I mean, we took a shot at the referendum last year. Beyond that, what are you all looking at?
Well, primarily, we at the partnership are supportive of the Surtax in Hillsborough County. We were contributors to the referendum effort. My boss, President and CEO of the partnership, Rick Holmans, was in the second row at the Supreme Court hearings. We're confident that there will be a funding source in Hillsborough County going forward. And how that manifests itself, and I think a lot of attention, and what we've learned in studying transit in other communities, is a lot of attention goes to the show horse, the premium project lines, but the real value of transit is sort of irrespective of mode, and it's just the frequency and the coverage, which translates into that vehicle revenue miles. And so I'll say that it was the professors at USF, through a rigorous statistical process, that determined, for this year, we did a deeper dive into some personal prosperity metrics. So that was the poverty rate, the income inequality, and the economic mobility. Previous years, analyses have also borne out the importance of the availability of transit for broader, I don't want to say impersonal, but less personal metrics like GRP per capita. So this year specifically, diving deep into the state of personal prosperity, we looked at the statistical correlations and relationships between the various inputs or our indicators and these outcomes of poverty rate, income inequality, and economic mobility.
Okay. Commissioner Chris?
Dave, great job on the report, as expected. So you talked about the economic mobility in relation to transit, at least for Hillsborough County, with the, should the AFT, when the AFT funding comes available, is that enough to get us to the, have you compared that, or?
Well, the specific policy experiment that was contemplated in these models performed by the Muma College of Business professors injected 20 additional revenue miles per capita into the economy, for lack of a better word. Currently, in Tampa Bay and in Hillsborough County, because the bulk, I mean, really, for a lot of these regional numbers, how Hillsborough County goes, because everything is weighted, you know, determines the regional figure. Right now, the regional vehicle revenue miles per capita is just north of 10. So to add 20 would be tripling it. The long-term, 30-year horizon contemplated under the AFT, People's Transportation Plan, pretty much gets there. And again, it's a lot of attention being paid to particular premium transit projects, but the biggest return on investment is going to come from enhanced local service.
Okay. Any other questions? Commissioner Powell?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Trying to understand, if I, if I'm understanding correctly, it seems like in comparing us to Jacksonville, I lived there for a little bit, and some of the data here that you presented to me seems like it would indicate that our population is more dependent upon cars and has less transit options than what Jacksonville would have. Is that correct?
Jacksonville on a per capita basis has a higher rate of transit availability than Tampa Bay. Tampa Bay, in the, and here I go, I said I wasn't going to do a time series analysis, Professor Green, but here comes one. In the three years I've been doing this report, Tampa Bay has been 20th out of 20 in terms of vehicle revenue miles on a per capita basis.
Just because we have more, because, I mean, it takes like an hour, going 85 miles an hour to get through Jacksonville. I mean, I used to hate living there because it took so long to get somewhere, and there was no bus. I mean, so it just baffles my mind that like, you know, that we're worse off than what they are in terms of public transportation. So they have the light rail downtown that no one ever used.
Well, the monorail, yes.
Yeah.
Jacksonville has made some strides recently. They've got a couple of significant BRT projects moving forward, using, I believe, the South Side Connector and some other major highways to move some people from the suburbs into the city.
Okay. Commissioner Joseph?
Thank you. A great presentation. I had one question. We spoke about the gap in wages between men and women, then we kind of moved to education and talked about income by degree type. Do you look at the types of degrees? Who's earning them? Men and women? Quantities, graduating, or anything like that? To speak back again to the issue between wage gap between men and women?
Right. So this does not, these, this level of educational attainment refers to the attainment of the people. It's not, it's not 100% predicted on how are the Hillsborough County schools performing? How is HCC performing? How is USF performing? So these could be degrees from anywhere. You know, the point of this slide and a longer presentation is, in many other communities, you see the gap. There's typically a significant gap at lower levels of education between men and women. But in other communities, those gaps sometimes narrow. Here in Tampa Bay, they stay the same, or they get even more dramatic as the level of education goes up. And, you know, for the most part, all of the gaps that we discuss in this report are more pronounced in urban environment with a lot of different types of jobs. And that's just reflective of the much more diverse economy within an urban county such as Hillsborough versus a suburban county of Pasco-Hernando. Hope that answers your question.
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions? Actually, I thought it was a great presentation. I was curious, who, what organizations or groups have you presented this to so far, and how's it been received?
It's, I think it's appreciated. It's not always the best news. We certainly don't sugarcoat, but we believe that understanding what the problems are is the first step to designing some solutions, because it helps groups like yourself that make some decisions prioritize direct resources and measure results. As, to your other point, we've presented this, I actually ended up doing kind of like a mini state-of-the-region event up in Hernando County for some Northern Pasco-Hernando and Citrus folks that weren't able to make it down. So we had about 50 or 60 leaders from that community, mostly led by the school board there, come together. Business groups, community-based organizations, and other government and quasi-governmental bodies, we're happy to share the story wherever we can.
Okay. And actually, I'm surprised I haven't seen anything in the newspaper related to this, because I think it is, it's interesting information.
There was Graham Brink, the feature business columnist for the Tampa Bay Times, had a story that came out the Sunday before our Wednesday luncheon, but we're about two months in on the release of the data. You know, what's refreshing, now that we're three years into it, and there's some certainty from the community that this will continue to be produced, the collaboration between the partnership, the Community Foundation United Way, and the Muma College of Business, all organizations that serve a broader community, has brought, I think, a little bit of certainty into the marketplace, knowing that this report will continue to be produced. We're starting to see this report be cited and leveraged for other reports and findings. And I think the bigger, the bigger part is it's resulting in some action. The Boys and Girls Clubs of Tampa Bay, which serves Hillsborough and Pasco County, as well as the Boys and Girls Club of the Sun Coast, they saw our rankings in terms of opportunity youth, which are folks age 16 to 24 that aren't in school and aren't employed, were ranking rather low, and we had featured a best practice from a group called Genesis Works in the Twin Cities in Minnesota. And the two executive directors went up there and met, and so they're bringing back that best practice and that learning. So the, as much as I love to see high school students get, you know, straight A's because they're using great data in their term papers, that's not the reason we do this. It's to incite some action, and so we're glad to see when that happens.
Okay. Thank you. Commissioner Green?
Mr. Chairman, were you specifically asking about now whether or not this, you've made presentations, David's made presentations, to the elected officials?
Well, I was just curious in general, because I must have missed the article in the paper.
Yeah.
But I think it's great information. I think it, you know, I'm surprised there hasn't been more information out there in the newspapers and in print.
We presented to a, we presented to the City Council at the end of January, Tampa City Council, and it wasn't coordinated, but when we shared the information about housing, there was a Housing Affordability Agenda item on there today, and it almost looked like that Charlie Chaplin film, where he walks around the corner waving a flag, and he runs right into the front of a, you know, a radical socialist parade, or something like that. We were not there leading the charge, but certainly the audience behind us appreciated our remarks.
So, just a follow-up. So I'm assuming there will be presentation to the Board of County Commissioners. What about the other elected officials at City of Temple Terrace or Plant City, or?
We have not been approached specifically by those individuals. We continue to work with Commissioner's staff at the County Commission. The challenge with this is, it's a lot of information, and while I very much appreciate, and I hope you've appreciated the opportunity for a brief presentation on this, to really do this information justice, it's a little bit of a longer conversation. And, you know, it really just scratches the surface. So we're trying to get it into more of a workshop-style setting with the Hillsborough County Commission.
Okay. I guess that's where I was, that's where I was going with my line of questioning, because I'm, I'm thinking, if we can, if we can give, if we can have a joint session of Congress at least once a year, why can't we have a joint session of all the elected officials here in this, in this community to help them better understand and digest this information?
Yeah. It's, that's also something we'd like to see, and there are certain fora for that, the Regional Planning Council. My understanding that is that the last joint commission meeting between the Pinellas and Hillsborough County Commission was in 1912, when the Pinellas folks, you know, said, "We're out of here." And that was that. We're hoping that, you know, something around some topic of interest, and perhaps this is it, will emanate in the future.
Okay. Thank you. Commissioner Cardenas?
I was actually going to say, I've heard him before, I've heard this before, and it's great. The last situation where I heard him give the presentation, it almost turned into a "Let's Kill the Messenger" type of thing. So I applaud you, you know, presenting this, because it should not be that at all. This is great information, and, you know, this is information for organizations that are out there that are in need to turn it around and give it right back.
Yeah.
So, thank you.
My pleasure. Thank you. And I'll make sure, through staff, that I get hard copies of the report to the commissioners here. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. We are going to move back to Agenda Item 3, the Evaluation of the Executive Director, and I'll turn it over to Tracy Robbin.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. I have mailed out to each of you and passed out some other copies today. For those of you who might not have brought them with you, copies of the Executive Director's Evaluation Report, and in the format that was approved by the Commission some time ago. I would like to add, I would like to collect those so that we can assimilate the data. Is there anyone left who does not have a copy? Please be sure that you've completed all the, please be sure that you complete the rankings and the summary, and put your name at the top of the first page. Thank you.
Actually, it's at the bottom of every page, yes. There's a space.
Yes. Initial or, well, put your name on it, it'll make it a lot easier, please.
Can you turn on a mic and make sure you stayed on the mic, please?
Initial or, well, put your name on it, it'll make it a lot easier, please.
Can you turn on a mic and make sure you state it on the mic, please?
Commissioners, it does look like on Page One, there's a missing line for Number Two. So just use that blank space to put your entry in there.
Compile this and we'll return to this probably towards the end of the meeting. We're gonna move on to Item Number Five on the agenda. It's the Wyomama Village Residential Two and Community Plan Update. Welcome.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Tatiana Gonzalez, Planning Commission Staff. This presentation is a status update on the WVR2 Land Use Study and Community Plan Update. It is an information-only item. This map highlights the WVR2 study area in purple. WVR2, which stands for Wyomama Village Residential Two, is a future land use category specific to the Wyomama Village Community Plan area. And this category allows up to two dwelling units per gross acre, provided that developments are clustered at a minimum of three and a half dwelling units per net acre on at least ten acres. Now, this land use category is currently under a moratorium for new rezonings, and the study will evaluate the employment and service requirements associated with this category. The other objectives of this study include updating the Wyomama Village Community Plan, developing a strategic action plan for implementing and revitalizing the Wyomama downtown vision, and providing policy recommendations for the WVR2 plan category. Now, the WVR2 land use study will be completed by the University of South Florida's Florida Center for Community Design and Research, which is the research division of the School of Architecture and Community Design. Parallel real estate market analysis and community profile is being completed by WTLNA, and that will inform the WVR2 land use study and ensure that the planning concepts are grounded in market and economic realities. Now, working with the Planning Commission throughout this process are a number of county partners, Hillsborough County Departments, Economic Development, Development Services, and Community and Infrastructure Services. Now, their collaboration allows us to engage in policy discussions and evaluate the consultants' deliverables holistically as the study progresses. Now, as part of the ongoing real estate market analysis, WTLNA prepared a few preliminary data points that we were able to share with a consultant from USF and the community, which were of particular interest. Wyomama residents spend nearly sixty cents of every dollar on goods and services outside of the community, denoting a need for services within the community. For every one hundred residents in Wyomama, there are only eleven jobs available. And nearly twenty-seven hundred residents leave the area to work daily. The public engagement and planning process for this study follows the seven-step Community Plan Update process, which requires a public notice to be sent to all residents within the Wyomama Community Plan boundary. Now, we held the first open house in Wyomama last week to introduce the consultant from USF and to explain the land use study and the Community Plan Update process. Then, a three-day charrette followed in which the USF team gathered input from the community through a hands-on design workshop, which culminated in a final presentation to the community on Saturday night. And county staff was actually present during the outreach to actually answer questions from the community. Now, additional outreach will take place. It includes a second open house to be scheduled in late April, and an online survey will be prepared to gather additional input. And all of the presentations and materials so far from these outreach events and any additional information regarding the study is available on the Planning Commission website. So our schedule for this land use study, we started actually last December with the real estate market analysis. WTLNA conducted initial stakeholder interviews in February. Last week, as I said, we held the first open house in Wyomama and the three-day charrette. In early April, we anticipate a focus group will be gathered, composed of outside experts from ULI, to review the preliminary recommendations from the consultant as a reality check. In late April, we will hold a second open house and renotice all the residents within the Wyomama Community Plan boundary. The consultants will provide their policy recommendations at the end of May, which will then result in the Planning Commission Public Hearing and BOCC Transmittal Hearing to follow in early and mid-June, respectively. And we anticipate the adoption of any code or plan amendments that come out of this process to occur prior to the moratorium deadline of August 31st. This concludes my presentation, but I am available for any questions.
Okay, thank you. Any questions from Commissioners? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
We will move on to Item Number Six, the Residential Plan Two Future Land Use Study Update.
Good afternoon. Marian Abrahamson, Planning Commission Staff. This is the Residential Plan Two Future Land Use Category Study Status Update, similar to WVR2, so I apologize if a little bit of this is repetitive from the previous presentation because this does follow a very similar framework to what we are doing for WVR2. So this is the study area for the RP2 Future Land Use Study. The orange portion is the land that is affected by the current moratorium. So the RP2 lands in Baum and Sun City Center Community Plan boundaries outside of the urban service area. The hashed mark lands are also within the study, those are just outside of the moratorium boundaries. All of this is occurring outside of the urban service area, which is denoted by the blue line. So the study objectives for the RP2 study are to review the market analysis previously presented by Tatiana that WTLNA are doing, and conducting public outreach in the form of open houses, stakeholder interviews, surveys, work sessions, and to provide policy recommendations for the RP2 Future Land Use category. The consultants for the Future Land Use Study portion is Kim Lee Horn, and as mentioned, WTLNA are doing the real estate market analysis. We are, of course, partnering with our county cohorts up in Economic Development, Development Services, and Community and Infrastructure Services, and they have been a part of the process from the beginning and will continue to remain part of the policy review team as we go forward. So earlier this year in February, we conducted stakeholder interviews at South Shore Regional Library. This created our initial group of stakeholders for the RP2 land use study. We have notified all of the property owners within the RP2 Future Land Use category outside of the USA for our public open house on Wednesday, this upcoming Wednesday, on the 11th, to be held at Summerfield Elementary School from 6:30 to 8:00. We also posted signs throughout the RP2 area, and we have initiated a website to communicate all of these things to the public and to post items going forward throughout the study. So as mentioned, we had our stakeholder interviews, the first set in February. Our first open house will be this Wednesday, March 11th. In early April, we'll be conducting additional stakeholder interviews, honing in on more future land use questions rather than the market and real estate questions that were done in February. We'll have a work session early April. Our second open house is late April, and then May 29th is when the policy recommendations are due from the consultants, leading into the Planning Commission Public Hearing and BOCC Transmittal in June. And again, having all of this adopted with these potential policy recommendations adopted before the moratorium deadline of August 31st. That concludes my presentation. I stand for questions.
Okay, any questions from Commissioners? No questions, thank you.
Thank you.
We're moving on to Item Number Seven, the briefing on unincorporated Hillsborough County Plan Amendments.
There's nothing on the screen. Oh, I'm sorry.
Good afternoon. Krista Kelly, Planning Commission Staff. Today, I'm presenting comprehensive plan amendment 20-01. This site is located south of Knights Griffin Road and Stacy Road. It's in the rural service area, and it's also within the boundaries of the Thona Tassasa Community Plan area. The major roadways that support a network surrounding this site are US Highway 301 to the north, I-4 to the south, and I-75 to the west. And this map shows the boundary of the Thona Tassasa Community Planning Area as well. The aerial outlines the site in pink. It's a seven-acre portion of a larger thirty-plus acre site. Currently, it's an agricultural-type property, as is the surrounding area. As you can see, there are scattered homes on large tracts, and this is a rural subdivision on larger tracts, half an acre and greater. There are natural resources surrounding the site that are fairly significant to the north, and on the north side of 301 is the Hillsborough River State Park. And south of the site is the Lake Thona Tassasa. The adopted future land use map shows a site currently adopted as residential one. And again, as you can see, the surrounding area is predominantly residential one. The state park is natural preservation, and then this is the lake. The applicant is requesting a change to light industrial of this seven-acre parcel, as you can see right here in the corner. The impact of this change, currently, the site would allow up to seven dwelling units, and for non-residential uses, 110,000 square feet or .25 FAR of non-residential use, whichever is less. If changed to light industrial, residential uses are not permitted, and the FAR would increase from .25 to .75, which would total approximately 228,000 square feet of non-residential use. This concludes my presentation. It's a brief overview, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Quick question.
Sure.
The picture that you have up, is this the lane that they want to change?
No, I'm sorry. I should change that out because it's misleading. What I wanted to show is that it's basically, you know, home sites around the lake, and I didn't catch the lines until too late.
Any other questions? Commissioner Dix?
This sort of creates kind of an enclave in the middle of that whole area, correct? And is that kind of unusual on its face?
Yes, it is. In fact, we just recently had plan amendments where they were trying to put homes in an area that essentially was encroaching on an agricultural area. The intent of the applicant was to take this portion out to serve for outdoor storage for the larger parcel. Of course, that's something that they discussed, but it's not confirmed.
Right. Thank you.
Sure.
Any other questions? We'll move on to the next one.
Thank you. The next plan amendment is comprehensive plan amendment 2002. This site is located on the north side of Swindell Road, outside of Plant City, and just west of the County Line Road between Hillsborough County and the City of Lakeland or Polk County. The site's in the rural service area. It is within the boundary of the Plant City Northeast Master Plan, but outside of the city limits. This area is served by a couple major roadways. I-4 is just south of the site, and again, County Line Road is to the east. The aerial shows the site. This is a seven-acre site that consists of two parcels. On one parcel, there is a single-family home. The remaining land is undeveloped. The surrounding area consists of large tracts with rural home sites currently. The adopted future land use map shows the site designated residential one. As you can see, it's in proximity to residential one to the north and to the west. This is agricultural rural one to five. To the south of the site, there are areas designated light industrial. A large portion of it along the exit ramp of I-4 is owned by FDOT, and it's for stormwater. And this northern and northwest portion is privately owned but undeveloped. I also put in the, because it is adjacent to Plant City, and I don't know if you can see very well, the blue line, the blue dotted line, that's the Plant City city limits. They have some commercial development and commercial land use on the south side of I-4, and some industrial land use categories. The applicant is requesting a change to light industrial, as you can see, outlined at the northern portion here. This is a seven-acre tract, and currently under RES1, it allows seven dwelling, up to seven dwelling units, and for non-residential uses, 110,000 square acres, I mean, square feet, or .25 FAR, whichever is less. The Amendment Two LI would eliminate residential uses and increase the FAR to .75, which would allow a maximum of 228,000 square feet of non-residential uses. And again, that concludes my presentation, and happy to answer any questions.
Commissioner Chris?
Chris, I don't know if you know, but it seems relevant what Polk County does on their side of the line since it's adjacent. Can you give us some guidance on that?
Yes, we did look at that. However, our policies are geared towards Hillsborough County and what we envision. Across the County Line, there is quite a bit of industrial development, but this site, as you'll see with the staff analysis, has other issues in terms of accessibility and infrastructure needs on our side of the county, which we base the timing and appropriateness of development in Hillsborough County. So...
Okay, so it's mostly industrial on the other side of the line?
They considered an industrial center for the City of Lakeland, and there are a lot of distribution and retail uses on that side.
If I could ask another question?
Sure.
I know we've, over the last year or so, we've talked a lot about, you know, preserving light industrial land in our entire county, and does your analysis also take that into consideration? Are we kind of running up short on industrial land out there, or kind of what's the status? You don't necessarily have to answer it right now, but that'd be helpful for us to know as well.
Absolutely. We'll investigate and go into more detail with that. And like I said, it is within the Plant City's Northeast Master Plan, so they have taken consideration about potential industrial use at the appropriate time.
Okay, Commissioner Dix?
Thank you. Do you know if there's been any discussion with the City of Plant City as far as a request to annex that portion into the city?
There have been informal discussions with the liaison, who is Mark Hudson in our office, and we did distribute this request to Plant City for comment. At this time, they had no comment. In a very informal sense, they consider that sometime in the future, annexation would be an option, but that they did not have plans at this time.
And do they express any comment on the change in use of the property?
At this time, we received no comment. I mean, they responded that they didn't have any additional comments at this time.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you.
Okay, one more. This is comprehensive plan amendment 2003. This site's in the urban service area. It's within the boundary of the Greater Carrollwood-North Dale Communities Plan Boundary. It's on the north side of Lowell Road and the south of Bradford Lane. The major roadways that support this site are Gun Hun Highway to the south and Dale Mayberry to the east. Mayberry to the east. It's a five acre site that consists of six parcels. As you can see, the development pattern in this area is predominantly suburban in scale with single family homes on half acre, I mean, quarter acre lots and smaller. Currently, the site's designated residential four, as is the surrounding area. However, there are more dense areas to the west, residential 12 and residential six and residential nine to the southwest. The applicant's requesting a change to residential nine and again, as you can see, there's kind of a mixture of suburban scale and more intense uses. The impact of the change on this five acre project area, currently, 21 dwelling units would be allowable under this designation. Up to 175,000 square feet or .25 FAR whichever is less for non-residential uses would be permitted if locational criteria was met. The change to residential nine would essentially double that amount, a little bit greater, 48 dwelling units and the, it would remain capped at 175,000 square feet for non-residential uses or an increase of FAR to .50. And that's a brief overview and I'm happy to answer any questions regarding this.
Any questions on this one? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Commissioners Will Augustine, Planning Commission staff. The next planned amendment briefing before you is Hillsborough County Comprehensive Plan Plan Amendment 2004 is located in northwest Hillsborough County, just north of Limeball Avenue and south of Gun Highway. The subject site is a privately initiated map amendment in northwest Hillsborough County which is approximately 3.42 acres in size. The aerial shows that the surrounding area is predominantly single family homes. The land use of residential four and residential six predominate the area. Subject property is north of Nixon Road and Limeball Avenue intersection. Anderson Road is to the west and Gun Highway and Limeball Avenue intersection is to the east. The subject site is in the urban service area. It has an adopted residential four land use classification. Large public, quasi-public parcel immediately to the east is the Xavier Canela Elementary School. To the west, along Lynn Road, is the Indian Cultural Center and the Hindu Temple of Florida. The area to the south along Limeball Avenue is a mixture of office, commercial, manufacturing and light industrial uses. Residential four and residential six again are the predominant land uses of the surrounding The applicant is requesting a residential 12 land use change. The currently adopted land use classification of residential four allows a maximum of 13 dwelling units on the 3.42 acre site. Suburban scale neighborhood, commercial, office and multipurpose projects are limited to 175,000 square feet or floor area ratio of .25. With a land use change to residential 12, the site, the subject site would have a potential build out of up to 41 dwelling units. Suburban scale neighborhood, commercial, office or multipurpose projects are limited to 175,000 square feet or floor area ratio of .50. And that concludes my presentation.
Okay. Any questions from Commissioners? Okay, thank you. We'll move on to the next one.
Again, Will Augustine, Planning Commission staff. The next agenda briefing item before you is Hillsborough County's Comprehensive Plan Comprehensive Plan Amendment 20-05 is located in south Hillsborough County along Highway 41, just south of Cracker Avenue and north of Big Ben Road. The subject site is a privately initiated map amendment in south Hillsborough County which is approximately 18.65 acres in size. The aerial shows that the surrounding area is predominantly commercial and manufacturing businesses. The land use of heavy industrial and light industrial predominate the area. The subject property is south of Cracker Avenue in the Highway 41 intersection. Port Tampa Authority's Port Red Wing and Tico's Big Ben Station is to the west and the Golden Aster Scrub Preserve is to the east. The subject site is within the urban service area. Site has an adopted suburban mixed use six land use classification. The area south of the subject site is heavy industrial, light industrial and community mixed use 12. North of the subject site is mostly residential four, suburban mixed use six and heavy industrial. Heavy industrial, light industrial and suburban mixed use six are the predominant land uses of the surrounding properties. The applicant is requesting a heavy industrial land use classification change. The currently adopted land use classification of suburban mixed use six allows a maximum of 111 dwelling units on the 18.65 acre site. Suburban scale neighborhood, commercial, office or multipurpose projects limited to, are limited to 175,000 square feet or a floor area ratio of .25. With a land use change to heavy industrial, the subject site would have a potential build out of up to over 609,000 square feet or a floor area ratio of .75. And that concludes my presentation.
Questions from Commissioners? Commissioner Powell?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. On the map that you had, this, I'm not sure if this is even applicable at this stage, but yeah, right here. When Ross Dickerson was here from ELAP, his map had this as an area, if memory serves me correct, where they were looking, you know, like acquiring, you know, land. So I don't know if they ever get consulted when, when map amendments come through here and like this is, it's a site that's, you know, in an area that they've identified as where they want to make a purchase, you know, it's like a, he had like a couple different zones, like a red and a green zone and red was like, in my mind, it seems like this was like one of his red sites or areas where there was to connect over to the nature preserve over there.
Yeah, the, the county departments are, sent these plan amendments for agency review and provided the opportunity to comment. We can specifically look at those, those maps and see if they're, it matches a site but I don't know that that would, from a policy standpoint, be something that today's policy, we would have to take a look at whether or not that would change anything, that it being an ELAP candidate or something they wanted to acquire. Certainly if it, they had acquired it, we'd be changing it to a different land use category but we'll have to take a look at that.
Commissioner Chris?
Yeah, just along those lines, I thought when he was here, I thought one of the suggestions I made is that that, his map could almost be overlaid on these maps and I'm not sure what that does with policy, if it's just a candidate, but it'd be helpful to know.
Okay. Any other questions? Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is Jawan Haley, Planning Commission staff, presenting the briefing for the Hillsborough County Comprehensive Plan Amendment 20-06. This is a privately initiated amendment. The request is to change the subject property's land use category 5508 Orient Road from commercial mixed use 12 to office commercial 20 OC 20. So this site is located in east Hillsborough County. It is within the urban service area. It is located on 1.46 acres. It is located in the northwestern quadrant of the Orient Road and east Hillsborough Avenue intersection. It's look, again, it's located within the urban service area. The existing land use is a mobile home park. It is located within the limits of the East Lake Orient Community Plan. So, so Orient Road in this area, it is a two lane collector and east Hillsborough Avenue, it is an arterial, it is four lanes. Also to provide some, some context for the area, this is the Hard Rock Cafe down here to the southeast. There is some residential here to the east across Orient Road. There is mostly light industrial type uses surrounding the subject property. Here though, you will see there is some single family just north. I believe the, the name for the roadway here, the local roadway is Zemus Road. I could be very wrong. I apologize. But yes, the majority of it is light industrial going back to the west. So here again, the land use category, the land use categories here do reflect the current land uses. The commercial, I'm sorry, the community mixed use category is bordering Orient Road here and also crosses Orient Road over to the east and to the southeast, including the, the Hard Rock Cafe and the subject property is outlined here. As you see back to the west, a large chunk of the, of the parcels are OC 20. Moving up here, this is the research corporate park category and further to the northwest, it is the light industrial category. The proposed amendment would extend office commercial 20 all the way up to the roadway So the impacts, currently, under the commercial mixed use 12 category, the subject property is allowed a density up to 12 dwelling units per acre. Currently, the maximum density is 17 dwelling units. The maximum floor area ratio for this site is .50 FAR. The maximum build out would be 31,798 square feet. The proposed land use category, again, is office commercial 20, allowing it to have a density of up to 20 dwelling units per acre. Maximum density would be 29 units. It would increase the FAR up to .75. The total maximum square footage here would be 47,698 square feet total. Just to note that in both of these categories, CMU 12 and OC 20, these categories are not subject to a commercial locational criteria. And if you have any questions, I'm more than happy to answer them. Thank you so much. That concludes my presentation.
Any questions? Commissioner Green?
Well, just a general question. I'm just trying to understand what's going on here. I pass by this all the time, but is that, is, is that a separate parcel just south of this, um, the subject site? That little sliver right?
Yeah, there's like a, it's a very narrow parcel. That is a separate site.
That's a separate parcel, okay.
It's a sep, yeah, it's, it's separate from the subject property. This, this, this property only includes one folio and that's, and that's the one outlined here. So yeah, it looks, it looks like it's encompassing it but it's, that is a separate site to the south.
Okay.
Are you referring, and I want to make sure, you're referring to this one right here?
Yes.
Yeah, that's outside, yeah, that's outside of it.
But is that part of the other parcel? That's at the corner?
I believe actually, if I can...
Completely separate piece of property. I'm just curious.
Yes, it's, yes, it's separate.
Okay, all right.
There it looks like from, I can see here, there is one, two, three parcels right here hugging this, this corner at the intersection.
Okay.
Any other questions? Commissioner Powell?
Thank you, Ms. Chair. Maybe a question for Melissa, but why is this particular category called office commercial when it looks like it's really increasing more like residential capacity? They giving, you know, I don't, I don't know what they're planning, obviously. We don't really ever know these things but it seems like this is more of a residential play than it is a commercial play.
Yes, it could, it could be. I'm not sure what the applicant's intent, intended utilization of the property is and why they wanted to, the FAR does increase but that's more for office uses going up to the .75 floor ratio.
Right. I think for here, especially looking at the level of intensity for this particular land use category, we usually have to take it all into consideration, especially when we're talking about compatibility. So in the land use category, in appendix A, you know, they have the charts in the back of the comp plan, it does talk about residential, compatible residential. So it is a more, the typical uses that are listed, it seems like the plan, it discusses community commercial type uses, office uses, mixed use developments and then it goes on to state compatible residential uses that are typical in this category. So I know I found it interesting that it kind of pointed it out that way because it is a very intense category. It's one of the most intense categories we have, so...
Their, their application simply indicates that, it doesn't indicate exactly what they want to utilize it for. They mentioned that there's mixed use development in the surrounding area with the Hard Rock Casino. It could be that they want the, the higher FAR potentially for a hotel. I don't know. That'd be a great question for the applicant when they're here next month.
Okay.
Yeah. And like I said, and just to follow up, that's why we have to look at kind of the biggest and baddest, you know, because it's, it's, it is such an intense category so we have to take all uses, all potential uses into consideration, so...
I guess my concern was just that, you know, it, since there are some other office and things over there, that seems like it's a pretty smart play maybe for a developer to try to just come in and say, oh, we're going to do this, but oh no, we have entitlements to all of a sudden we have a little townhome project, you know, and so, my thoughts.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
We'll move on to the executive directors to report. Melissa?
Melissa Zornita, Executive Director. The executive director's report should be at your seat. I just wanted to highlight a couple of things. February 18th, Mark Hudson and I went out to the City of Temple Terrace to, Mark presented their updated procedures manual which they unanimously supported and I had a discussion with them about the opportunity to study increasing their plan amendment fees. It's something I had talked with their city manager about and he was interested in the potential in particular to recoup some of the city's cost of the plan amendment process but he wanted to get direction from the city council. They, they were not receptive to that idea and so we have heard...
that idea, and so, we have heard from Temple Terrace, we've heard from Plant City's city manager, that they're not particularly interested, we're still working with the City of Tampa on looking at potentially studying what the right fee should be for them. I have had a number of meetings with the city or city council folks over the last few weeks, there seems to be a lot of energy from City of Tampa, as they are really, I think, moving towards, they have some new staff onboard, Tony and I had the opportunity to meet with John Bennett, the Chief of Staff, Councilman Carlson asked our staff to have a brainstorming session with him, he wanted us to bring all of our big ideas to him, and so we had a group of, of staff get together and share with him, sort of in like a, probably shorter than a TED Talk, but like, real quick, like, the, these are some of the ideas that we have. And then last week, I had the opportunity to share with Tampa City Council some of the information on our growth projections, they will be having a joint City of Tampa Board of County Commissioners workshop on March 25th at 1:30 on the 26th floor in this building to talk about those projections as well. So, a lot of interest in that topic, I actually was invited and spoke at lunchtime today to the Economics Club of Tampa on that same topic, and then you will see me sort of run out of here after the public hearing, because I'm supposed to be speaking to a land use planning class at USF's tonight, so, after, after the public hearing, I'm gonna scoot out. A couple of announcements for your April meeting, we will be having one of our information barbecues on that Monday from noon to 1:00, I've invited Liz Abernathy, who's the Director of Planning for the City of St. Pete, to come and talk about their recent zoning changes to allow for the missing middle, more affordable housing at sort of medium-density infill development into their neighborhoods. So, that longer session will be happening at lunchtime, and I hope you would share this with colleagues and, and who might be interested, she will be staying for the Planning Commission meeting and giving a shortened version of that presentation to you all. Then, we also have, are announcing our FLIP program, and that's coming up in June, and applications are being accepted, so again, please share with your colleagues and friends that that is an opportunity for high school students to learn some more about their community and about planning, it's free, we have about 22 high school students who we bring in each year for that. And you also should have gotten at your desk an announcement about the Grow Community Gardens Conference that will be happening in, I can't get it to separate, in May, and the, this is part of our work through the Garden Steps Program, the MPO was in receipt of a grant for some additional community garden work, and this is one of the programs they're doing, they also will be at the Home and Garden Show, that's coming up at the end of the month, giving some demonstrations about how to cook with your healthy vegetables you grow in your garden. Also at your seat, I had a lot of things at your seat today, are some updates from Diane Salz on the legislative session, and she sent me this this morning, she said it's supposed to be the final week of the, this is something she got from Legislative Thumbnail, it's called, it's supposed to be the final week of the legislative session, but it won't be, the budget, Senate Budget Chair thinks they'll need to go overtime if only for a few days, the budget talks are still in the works, several major issues were settled over the weekend, Visit Florida will not be abolished, teachers and state workers will get a pay increase, hundreds of millions of dollars in the state's Affordable Housing Trust Fund will actually be spent on housing instead of diverted to other projects, they are still, apparently the housing and senate leaders have also agreed to the governor's request for 25 million to help fight the coronavirus, and, but there are still a number of differences to be worked out on criminal justice and the environment. I know a number of us had been following the affordable housing piece, she also alerted me to a bill that has, at this point, I understand, they have added to one of the growth management bills, a requirement for a property rights element to be added to the comprehensive plans. I don't think substantively that would change a lot about what is already in state statute about property rights or in existing case law about property rights, but it will require, if that is a requirement to be in all four comprehensive plans, time on your staff's part to create that element and add, go through the amendment process with you all to add that. So, there is a, I made her aware that there would be a cost to that in terms of staff time and resources. I think, oh, the other thing I wanted to mention was, we did set a date for the port tour of April 15th, that's first thing in the morning, we will send out a reminder that week, and that's all I have for you today.
Okay, any questions for Melissa? Commissioner Green?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Melissa, it's certainly refreshing, I, maybe it's, that's one we're putting it, that the legislature will in fact not raid the Affordable Housing Trust Fund, as in years past.
Yeah.
It's encouraging, nevertheless, but, um, does, does anybody here locally track that, you know, those, those, let's say allocations that go into the Affordable Housing Trust Fund, and, and how they're manifesting themselves at the local level, if at all? Does your committee do that?
Our committee doesn't necessarily, from what I've seen thus far, like specifically track that, but the Florida Housing Coalition, I believe, does, and then the, the county staff, I'm sure they do as well, but they would only be tracking, you know, I think in terms of like, what they receive and what they, you know, should have received, is that what you're trying to, like, you know, because I mean, that right there, it's pretty easy to define, I mean, there's about $2 billion, you know, over the last, I don't know, 15 years or so, that, you know, has not been allocated.
Yes.
To, you know, to be spent out, so, so yeah, that, that is tracked, but I think that, probably the best agency that probably tracks that is the Florida Housing Coalition.
Okay, and my second question, Melissa, is, what was the opposition to the, um, fee increase for processing comp plan amendments?
The City of, at least one council member stated that they liked being development-friendly in the City of Temple Terrace, and that it was not a negative thing, that they were less expensive than the county.
Okay, okay. Right. Okay.
Any other questions? I did want to state that the Future Leaders in Planning Program, it's a great program, I've known a few kids who've gone through it, so if you've got a child in ninth, 10th, or 11th, who's interested in going through it, please have them sign up or apply.
Yeah.
My daughter went through it, and I'll tell you, she had college interviews, and they asked about this, she was kind of surprised, some of the other things she had on her resume, and they asked about this, they, a, a number of folks were very interested in this, because it's so unique, but it's a great opportunity, and it's actually four days, was it four days last year, two, okay?
Yes.
Because I know it started off two, and it went three, and now it's four, but it's great information, and it's a great opportunity for kids, high school kids, who are interested in planning, because they get a lot of exposure and they get to learn a lot, so I'd encourage anyone who's interested to have their kids sign up, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next up is the other business, chairs business, I do not have anything, I'll move on to old business. I guess that'd be, any old business? Tracy, I guess this will follow to new business, or old business?
Yes. Commissioners, I'm passing around now the, the summary of everybody's evaluation, showing the scores for, in each category posted by each commissioner, and at the bottom of the page, you'll notice that there is an index of consensus or index of agreement, this formula measures the consensus among the various commissioners for your, for your perusal.
I'll give everybody a second to digest what we have in front of us. Once we've had a second to digest, if anyone has any questions for Tracy concerning this? Commissioner Dix? Yeah?
I just wanted to kind of go on the record here, as being the low scorer of the bunch, rather significantly, is that I think Melissa does just a very fine job, but I, I want to emphasize that, I wasn't trying to list her as low scores, but, you know, if, if you look at the, the job rating scale, you know, a three meets the expectations, and, you know, then you go, four exceeds, and five remarkable, and, you know, I, I don't mean to be facetious or anything, but I consider remarkable something that Jesus would do. And I just don't want, with that understanding, I don't want Melissa to, to look at me and think that she's not performing well, because, because you are, and of course, I think that's, that's registered across the board, but I, I felt like, since I was so, so much lower than everyone else, I needed to make that comment.
Thank you, Commissioner Doughty?
To follow along those lines, this may be the first year that I'm not the lowest scored guy, okay? But I, I believe in a number of years, I have made similar observations to the fact that doing your job, the, the rating scale tends to be such that, you know, anything above three still means she's doing a really good job, so, and I've, I don't think that the scores have ever been taken that we think she's doing a bad job, or that any of the other past executive directors were doing a bad job, as far as that goes, so, but I agree, you know, the meeting expectations is a three, and, and, yes, the five is, yeah, Jesus territory, so yeah, thanks.
Any other comments, questions? Yeah, Commissioner Green?
I was, I was gonna suggest, maybe, maybe, maybe that remarkable term is, and again, I got thrown off by that also, because I'm, I'm thinking, well, I don't know if we're, I don't know if we're in a position to, to call her remarkable, maybe her husband could, but, but we can't, okay, but, I don't know, can we, can we change that to something like overall impact, or something like that, or?
Of course, the board can make any changes that it would like to in, in the entire process, and, and has from time to time in some of the, the questions that are in the, the evaluation sheet that you worked through earlier.
Maybe that's something we can, I don't know, when and where we take that up, but maybe just...
Absolutely, the one thing I would say is that the, the scale, the one through five scale, is consistent with how staff is rated on their different dimensions, and that was something that was a change a few years ago to make it consistent with the staff rating scale, but how you describe each of those and what you're looking for, absolutely, we could have some discussion about, I also had mentioned to Commissioner Thrower that I would like to have some discussion about some of the dimensions, particularly the ones that are under goal attainment, and better relate those back to our strategic plan, as, right now, they're not necessarily in sync with what you all have put together in the strategic plan, and I'd like to see that lined up a little bit better, and make it easier for us to be measuring how we're doing in terms of performance, so we could have a discussion about that in April, if, if that would suit everyone.
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, the other thing, Melissa and I discussed briefly is looking at Melissa's contract, because I, I believe it's a five-year contract, but I'm not sure exactly when it, when it drew effect, so we need to look at that, just to see when it's coming up for renewal, or, you know, just to make certain, we don't want to wait till the last minute on that, so Melissa was in a check, and let us know when her current five-year contract started, the effective date, and, and date for that, just so we're aware, so, any other comments, or?
Yeah, I have another, as a part of this discussion in April, you made things, you know, consistent with staff evaluations, and what I, what I don't know is, does, does staff evaluate you?
Not specifically outside of the climate survey that was just conducted.
Okay, I'm just wondering whether, I, I've, I've been in, in those situations where it's kind of a, you know, you review yourself, you, staff reviews you, yeah, yeah, the whole, the whole deal, because I, quite honestly, to go along with what, you know, Commissioner Green was talking about, you know, we, we see you once a month, they see you every day.
Right.
And it might behoove us to hear what they think.
Right, and that was the original genesis of the climate survey, and, but it was the best practice from our consultant, that that be done every two years as opposed to annually, so that you can see changes, because it's hard to change something within a, a year, and so they, that...
Yeah, this might be a little different, I, we don't, we don't have to have discussions...
It would be different, absolutely, and that's something we can explore, yeah.
Good, okay.
Okay, any, any other questions or comments, otherwise we'll, Tracy, do you have anything to add? Have we missed anything?
No, I don't, I'm, you, no, I don't, thank you.
Okay, well, we will have this on as a discussion item at our next agenda, that way everybody can digest, Melissa will look into the contract and the other items that were brought up, and we'll just have this as a discussion item on our next agenda, so, thank you. Let's see, what else? I guess that was, was that old business or new business, I'm not sure, but, any new business? Yeah, it's business, any new business? Any committee reports? Commissioner Powell?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, the Affordable Housing Board met this morning, the, we had some really nice presentations by the Land Trust, and they, Florida Community Land Trust provided a really healthy, nice, light reading packet of material here, about 100 something pages, I'm gonna read this tonight, and overall, it was just another option for affordable housing, Cliff Notes, from what I gathered, is just that they do a long-term, you know, ground lease, and then homeowners still have the option to own their house, and they can get a mortgage and things like that, but the land that it sits on, they will never, you know, technically own it, but what it does allow for is, allows for them to, the, the trust to ensure that whoever is gonna own that house down the line, that it continues to stay for someone who is in affordable, you know, housing need, there's been some recent, like apartment communities that once their taxes... There's been some recent, like apartment communities, that once their tax grants, you know, were fulfilled, you know, with their 20 or 30-year agreements, they've then, you know, been sold, and those are going to be sold to people who are going to, you know, put in capital, and then, you know, go to market rate rents in low economic areas. So that's, what I gathered was, you know, kind of one of the biggest benefits, you know, is kind of ensuring that it maintains, you know, to a family that's going to be through affordable housing. And then to chime in on what Melissa was touching on, it did come out, I heard about it yesterday. I got an email, an article, talking about fully funding, you know, of the Sodowsky Trust, and that it was, you know, stated by the Senate President and the House Majority Leader that they are not going to, or we will not see any sweep of trust funds. But I think it specifically meant more of the Sodowsky Trust. I'm sure there might be some other trust funds that may not make it. But the legislative session is not, it was supposed to close on Friday, but I think that they are still indicating that they need a couple more days, and might be due to not sweeping accounts and trying to find where money is going to go. And that's it.
Okay, Commissioner Rodriguez?
The City's Affordable Housing Advisory Committee, the big thing we did for last month's meeting is we took a field trip to the Abel Nook Development Center. Abel Nook is a, it's a tiny home company, sorry, I believe by a group of USF alumni. And they have a remarkable product, that it's very modular. Literally, it pieces together, and right now, the only tool you need is an Allen wrench, literally. And they're trying to work around that in their development process. But it's a modular system, so you can expand the number of bedrooms and so forth that you would need for the system. And it was a really great tour, and it's a really neat product. So I'm looking forward to what, as it emerges onto the market. And they literally have a worldwide market at this point. So hopefully, and I mentioned it at last meeting, City of Tampa is looking at a parcel for a potential tiny home subdivision of city-acquired property. So they would be like a really good group to work with. And I'm sure there'll be an RFP process that'll vet all that out through the city. But it was just a really neat tour of looking at a really unique product, so glad we did that.
Did they discuss the retail price? I'm curious what those things sell for.
And once again, due to the modularity, it expands and contracts. I mean, you can do a basic for around $75,000, is what they were saying. They have banks that they have already worked financing packages with. But once again, depending on how big you want to go, the price would increase.
Okay. Commissioner Powell, do you have a question?
I do, and it's kind of a follow-up to Melissa. One of the things that I've asked before, you know, is really what is so different from, you know, a modular home, you know, when it's framed inside of a factory versus it being framed, you know, on-site? But why do we have to call it a modular home? Why can we not call, if it's built to local county code, why cannot not be called a single-family house? But no, in classification, though, like you look at like the county, on the county website, like Sarah Combs, like with the university or CDC, like they did a two-unit, when she came back in like October or something last year, and, you know, they did their test. And it's a single-family house, but in the county website, it's actually, it doesn't say "single-family", it says "modular". And, you know, modular has, a lot of people, you know, kind of equate that to mobile home. You know, like, and so I would love to see or understand why we, as a county, can't call that, if it's built to local county code, why can we not call that a single-family house? Because to me, it has more value. I mean, Giovanni can probably attest to this. When you, is it easier to sell a modular home, or is it easier to sell a single-family house?
Yeah, it's easier to sell a single-family house, but I think, I've been to the Abel Nook, and they're really cool units. I think what it comes down to is cost and practicality, when people are going to decide to use these or not, even if it's in the context of a tiny home or not a tiny home. Even, I've seen some tiny homes that can be considered a little bit more, something that's not, you can't pick it up in a day and go. It's set there, it's a small, tiny home that is set to be there. These, you could pack it up on a pallet in a day, probably a couple of hours. They're pretty cool units, yeah. They, essentially what it is, is when you put it together, it has a base, and then it has several different columns, and then you can slide the panels in, and then they kind of lock amongst each other. So then you just only have to lock the top piece in place, if I'm describing it correctly, I think. But it is just different, I would say, in the context of something that would be considered a regular, single-family home. You can't pick it up and go.
Yeah, it'd be interesting if property insurance rated as a higher risk than a single-family home.
They will.
Because if they do, that could be where it goes.
Yes, that's...
Because that's what first comes to mind for me. I know an individual who bought a, and it was not a, it wasn't a small home, but it was one of those homes they'd put on-site, prefabbed, and she was so shocked when she got her insurance bill for property insurance, it was, you know...
If you think about it, when you're buying a property, you're buying a piece of land with a solid structure that you can't just pick up and go. So what ends up happening is, if the bank, you can, if something happens to that structure, you're not taking care of that structure, the bank will come in and take over that property and service that structure. So you're putting yourself, the bank would be putting themselves in a situation to say, "Well, somebody could just walk away with this house, and then, the guy was just in the land."
I understand your point. What I'm saying is, is that when it's done to local building code, where, you know, when a house is framed, you pour the slab, and then they start framing, they start nailing, you know, nails through two-by-fours to secure it to the ground.
Mm-hmm.
Right? So, but it's just happened to be done on-site. With a modular home, like what, you know, if someone pours a slab, and then they just, you know, they bring the house in, and they still bolt it in, and, you know, and they use the same exact building code requirements, that is not called a single-family house. That is called, you know, a modular home. And my point is that you can build the same house significantly cheaper in a factory, not trying to like take out, you know, workers and destroy the building industry here, but, you know, for affordable housing purposes, especially for, you know, those who have, they don't have enough funds, you know, we're always looking for ways for a lower bearer of entry, you know, for them to get into their homeownership, or just, you know, safe housing, tangible housing, whatever word we're calling it at the moment. But it just seems to me like it would allow them to have an extra, you know, leg up to help create that generational wealth, and, you know, pass, you know, something down, and, you know, I mean, it just seems like it, I'm just curious why we don't do that.
There's a lot, if I may, there's a lot of confusion about that term "modular", because that can describe so many different types of residential construction, not just the manufactured full units that most of us probably call, think about, mobile homes. But you could get a fully manufactured dwelling unit that comes out of the factory, that's not a mobile home, let's say. That's another form of modularity. And then the components, okay, the house could be, you know, it could have wall modules, floor modules, or whatever. It's still considered modular construction, again, but it's, who's using that term and how are they using it?
You know, I'm curious if part of it has to do with safety in the context of, if we're having a hurricane that's coming up or something like that, and we've got public officials looking at a map, and they're saying, "Oh, these are modular homes over here", that outlines that to them, and then they know that that is a larger risk in the context of those people may, you know, those homes may need to be evacuated. I don't know if anybody knows if that could be part of the reasoning why they use that.
That's because here in Florida, we don't build, in other parts of the country, what they call modular is a factory-built half a house. It's trucked to a site, crane dropped into place, the other unit comes and sits right next out, right next to it. You've got a whole house. It will meet every code that, you know, in local jurisdictions. But we don't build, we don't have those types of factories here in Florida that do that type of construction. All they build is mobile homes, okay, which is different. So again, it's, you know, it's the way we hear that term, and who's using it, how they're using it, or what was intended behind that modular term, because there are a number of different modular approaches to construction, okay? But that's probably why they do it that way, because more than likely, they're also trying to indicate that for insurance purposes, yes, there is a difference. Now, in the situation with Abel Nook, you know, my former students, who have, you know, who devised, developed this system, I would call that more of a housing system, essentially. Because when they first conceived of it, it was part of a master's architectural thesis that dealt with emergency shelter that could be deployed in other parts of the world on a rapid basis, okay? Now, so it very easily can be constructed by, you know, two people, a couple hours, with just a basic set of hand tools, let's say. But as far as, well, I've got my own opinions about its use as far as affordable housing, because there, again, I think it's going to run to an insurance issue, okay? Because when you think about it, there are these issues related to durability, okay? Not just from hurricanes, but from usage, okay? And that's where, you know, again, that system would have to be significantly more durable.
Microphone, please.
If you did the exact same process, and you built it the exact same, the same building code, what is the difference if that, you know, house was just, because it's built in a factory, it has, you know, the modular name to it, which is, to me, it's a little, I don't know if derogatory is the right word, but it's just, I mean, it's escaping me. You have better words than I do.
I think you're right, that's probably...
And so it just, you know, stigma, that's what I was looking for, thank you, stigma. You know, so, because you can start putting bodies indoors and roofs in two to three months versus, you know, takes even Pulte-Syn-tax, I mean, they got it down to a pretty good science in six months. You know, and, you know, cheaper, and we're talking about our last, you know, meeting, why we're not developing to, you know, full densities and, you know, time, and things, so just, I don't know, I could go on, but I'm just curious why we don't, you know, why we can't do it like that, at least for, you know, on the affordable housing side of things, you know, and call something a house for somebody, versus they have to be in a modular home.
Well, they're doing it in other parts of the country.
I don't care about other parts, I just care about here.
Right. But what I'm saying, what I'm getting at, is we don't have people...
Microphone, please.
We don't have people who build like that in this area.
Melissa, thank you.
Well, I would just say that in the land development code, it does talk about mobile home, modular home, manufactured home, all differently. And so we absolutely could talk with somebody to come in and just explain the differences between those different things. The comprehensive plan tends to speak to mobile and manufactured home, perhaps differently than single-family homes. But this issue of modular is seemingly somewhere in the middle. So I think that would be a great thing for us to get some clarification on. Thank you.
Commissioner Marina?
I was just going to provide a report.
Okay, yep.
So at the Little Roways Committee, we discussed the Resilient Tampa Pilot Project, which, you know, we've talked about climate change and sea level rise here. So that was interesting, talk about how to handle infrastructure during either a category-three storm or a nine inches of rain in 24-hour period, how many roads would be inundated. We also took a field trip where we looked at the new crosswalk in front of Rampe Loe School, where they did classic books and the crosswalk as a piece of street art. There's another elementary school that just had that project done. But I think the goal is to have eight in the city of Tampa by the end of the year, two in each city council district, and looking at programs also in Hillsborough County. At the MPO, there was a tip amendment that was approved for improvement to 75 and 301. And I think for our purposes, one of the more interesting things that came up was, at the end of the meeting, school member Cindy Stewart mentioned the fact that there's a new high school, middle school combination going in off of Baum Road, and it's a two-lane road. And it's not anywhere in future project plans. And there's 3,000 students who are going to go there as soon as it opens next year. So she expressed concern about how fast these projects are moving through the county approval process. So that was interesting, just kind of hearing that perspective about you have to build these new schools, and the infrastructure's not keeping up. So that's my report.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments, questions? Okay, before we adjourn, I did want to mention, we have Charles Andrews from the school board today. Welcome.
Thank you very much.
He's here in place of Commissioner Dickerson. So just wanted to introduce him. I also wanted to let you know, at 5:30, we have a Temple Terrace public hearing. So barring no other questions, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you.